Good morning.
Good morning.
And happy Tuesday to you. Today is Tuesday, March the 14th, 2023, and we are here shortly after the 10:00 a.m. hour. We're here at 903 Main Street in the Rockdale Auditorium. Commissioners, today is March the 14th. That means it's the middle of the month.
It's also Pi Day.
It's also what day?
Pi Day.
Pi Day, okay.
If you're a math teacher, you know what that is.
All right, I'm not a math teacher, but I know you are.
No, I didn't do math.
And that's a perfect segue for me to acknowledge the young people who will hear from Wilson Academy. If you all will stand, we want to acknowledge you and give you a round of applause from Thank you so much. We're so glad to have you. I believe, Commissioners, that these young people who represent Wilson Academy, one of our fine institutions of private education and learning here in Rockdale County, it's my understanding that they are a part of the social studies or civics and leadership program at Wilson Academy, and they are here to observe the Board of Commissioners meeting and learn about civic leadership on the local level this morning. So we are delighted to have each and every one of you all here, and I know you're going to be quizzed when you get back, so we ask that you take some very good notes, because I'm sure Mr. Wilson and his staff is going to be asking you several questions. So we're calling our meeting to order this morning. We want to start off with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by none other than our very own Director Dan Morgan from Emergency Management. Director Morgan.
Thank you. Good morning. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in a meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and to nurture the bonds of community. Enable us to think and strategize in ways that will achieve great results. I pray that we feel your presence during this meeting, because you are with us wherever we go and whatever we do. Amen. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Director Morgan, for leading us in our invocation and our pledge this morning. Commissioners, at this time, we are honored to have one of our partners in civic leadership here with us this morning, from the City of Conyers City Council, none other than the Honorable Councilwoman Valencia Smith. Come on up, Ms. Smith. I'm calling you. That's where you come on up there to the podium and give us your presentation this morning. We're so glad to have you. One of the things we often brag about is our relationship with the City of Conyers, and certainly having a city councilwoman out this morning. And I think this is a perfect opportunity, because we have the young people here, they see the Board of Commissioners, there's the city councilwoman present, and they're going to hear from you this morning.
Well, thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Rockdale.
Good morning.
This morning, I'm bringing to you our comprehensive plan survey. We began talking about it last year. I'm a very strong believer in making sure that we engulf in conversation and keep our community abreast of what's going on in the city, but also engage them to be able to participate in our plans for the future. So I am bringing to you, from the city to the county, which also includes county residents, our comprehensive plan survey. As you can see above, there's a QR code, and if you go to the city's website, you will see the website link that you can click on. It's a very brief survey. It asks you a great deal of information about your input, things that you would like to see, how you feel about certain subject matters, and it gives us an idea to be able to take all of this information and use it as a committee to plan for our future. So I ask that everybody who is watching the board meeting this morning, or later on in the day, or also everybody who's present, including Wilson Academy, hey, lovelies, you can actually take the survey, too. We would love our young people to have input as well. If you go to the city's website, again, you can't scan the QR code there, but there is a link. And if you are just so happen at the Cherry Blossom Festival, we are printing up thousands of these cards to make sure that you get one in your hand, or you can get one to your guest's hand. Tell your neighbor, tell your friend, even if you don't live in the city, your opinion, your words, they matter, they count. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to bring this to the board and all of your residents, and I'm looking forward to seeing your comments and your inputs.
Thank you. Commissioner, go right ahead.
First of all, thank you for the presentation. How many surveys have been completed thus far?
159.
So we have 159 people that have taken the time to voice their opinion, and I would take, of course, I'm on the committee, but I really, really would like for more people to give their input, because this is where the rubber meets the road on both this comprehensive plan and our county comprehensive plan, where we get the feedback on how you all want to move the city and the county forward. So we only have 136 responses out of, what, 10,000 residents?
17,000.
17,000 residents in the city, so we need to do better, Conyers.
That's why I'm here. So we are going to do better, and you will be seeing me all throughout the county and the city. I'm going to everybody's church, everybody's community event. We're going to get this information out here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams, any comment for the councilwoman?
I can't remember if I took the survey already. Maybe not.
That's okay, you can take it again.
But I will go back and just double check. But yeah, I think it's really important to get the feedback from everybody, just as we're beginning our comprehensive land use update in the next few months. We're going to be asking the same thing for public input, and so I encourage everybody to get the little QR code, which I tried to get it from there, but it wouldn't work.
I got one for you.
Okay, all right. So thank you for coming this morning.
No problem.
So councilwoman, you brought a stack with you, I see, this morning?
Well, I brought three, just in case the chair and the board hadn't taken it, but I know Commissioner Washington has. But just in case you yourself, Chairman, or Commissioner Williams hadn't had the opportunity, I brought three.
Very good.
But I have an extra one, just in case anybody wants to pass it along, or your staff and what have you, and they could scan the QR code and keep passing.
So I was going to, first of all, let me say thank you for you coming out and sharing and representing the City of Conyers. We're going to be here for a minute or two this morning. You have enough time if you want to get some more cards from the city office, bring them out to the vestibule, and make sure that those folks who are currently present can take advantage of them while you're actually here, if you'd like to do that. Let's give the city councilwoman a round of applause for being here, representing the City of Conyers. All right, okay, Commissioners, we'll move to item number four, the approval of the agenda. What's your pleasure?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
And it's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number five?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded for the approval of the minutes of February the 28th, 2023, and March the 7th of 2023. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number six, there is no unfinished business at this time. Commissioners, we're going to move right on to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as listed.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Brings us now to the regular agenda, and I will yield to the Executive Director, Rulich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 101 is rezoning case 2022-13, in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning 460 Honey Creek Road Southeast from AR Agricultural Residential to CRS Collaborative Residential Subdivision Zoning District to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted this morning for a second reading.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
We have to put the motion on the floor in order to discuss, because there, I want to, there's some, I really wanted to...
Let's put the motion on the floor.
Okay, all right. Based upon the criteria listed in Rockdale County Section 238-4, I hereby move to deny this ordinance as presented.
I second that motion. It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? Comments?
This rezoning has been different to me. I started out with the 640 or 600 and something homes as a flat denial.
And Commissioner, you just took the mic away from me. They need, I think they made an adjustment so they can...
Okay. I started out as a flat denial, and then I went out to look at the property, and I got to speak to the owner and the owner's representative, and I saw a bigger vision for this county than to just deny it. So the story that was presented to me by the owner and the owner's representative is that this property has been in the family since before Rockdale County was Rockdale County. The gentleman walked from New York to Rockdale County, carved out his land, and that family has been the owner of that property ever since, and they've held it in a conservatorship for a very long time. Now Ms. Cowan is very old and very ill, and they have to sell the property. They're going to sell it, so that's the number one thing. This property is going to be sold. And it's a lot of land, and Rockdale County, we had no idea that they were even considering selling their land, so we haven't been prepping to do any development out there, because it's been the same for so long. From what the story that has been told to me is that the, there have been, so Ms. Cowan started trying to sell this property herself. She had a for sale sign out there herself, trying to sell this land, and there were so many people that were trying to steal the land from her, trying to get it to her from, sell it for less than what it was worth. Finally, they found a broker that they trusted, that could fill the offers and could do what she wanted. Her vision was to keep this as a place that families could enjoy. She really wanted to do something where groups of families could enjoy the property that she and her family have enjoyed for so long. So with the agent, so many people have been able, have given her offers on the property, but many of them, we thought that 600 houses were a lot, they were coming back with 700 and something houses, cutting down all the trees, trying to make tract houses and things like that. Finally, they got an offer from D.R. Horton that was less money, but they were the ones that offered the conservatorship. And to her, that was the beginning of anybody listening trying to save the legacy of our family. So we still, at that point, it was at the 640 homes, which of course, or 600 and something. I was like, no way, we're not doing that. But I wanted to see if there was a way that we could create something that held true with the legacy of what the Cowan family tried to present. And like I said, when I got there, and you see the lake, and you see the vision for the amenities, I thought that this would be something that we could do if we did it right. And by right, meaning, everybody says something about a public-private partnership, but the private part, they not really trying to do a lot of things unless they can make money, because it's a business, they're trying to make money. But with this public-private partnership, they're willing to start bringing the sewer out that way, which means that that's opportunity for more economic development, for people who already live there, that have approached us for sewer, to start being able to tap into the sewer lines. I understand that, like I said, we weren't ready for a 300, almost 300-acre tract to be developed, but I believe that if we do it slowly, by restricting the number of permits that could be pulled per year to less than 100, so I'm thinking like eight per month, which would be 96 per year, that would be something where we could monitor the wastewater, the sewer, the schools, everything on a continual basis. And if we put some kind of benchmark before they can pull for the next year, then that would be helping to move a project along. I'm thinking that we could craft this where they have a boulevard entrance, they have a sense of place where we create, they create their own signage, they're already going to be, there's a lake there, and it was the lake that showed me that if we do this right, we could have a generation of children that know how to fish, because they could go easily with their parents or their grandparents to the lake to fish. You could have date night on the lake, well, maybe date day on the lake. You could, they were putting fire pits there, they were putting a community garden there. I would want the electric stations there. When we had the public hearing, the community, not only did we have people cheering because they wanted high-end housing, but they were concerned about the workforce housing. Also, with this kind of development, we could do both. We can ask for 15% of the housing to be at the 3,000 square feet and above, and we can ask for them to limit the, for 10% of the housing to be the 1,800 square feet. We can, we could create something that this community would be proud of. A lot of people are asking, well, what about the school system? You know, you mentioned the, at our last meeting, the email that Dr. Oates sent regarding the schools, and that, to me, we hear the negative things in the schools, but we're forgetting, we have students in Rockdale County schools that are getting full scholarships to Tier One schools. I met a young man who has an academic scholarship, he has an athletic scholarship to Harvard. Now, in order to get in Harvard, even on an athletic scholarship, you have to be doing something right. I know so many people that are doing, that our school system is doing right by, these children are coming to school, they want to learn, and they're excelling. We have a school board that's getting top honors all the way around. I know that when it's time to create new schools, they will be on top of it, like they've been on top of everything else. There's just so many ways that we can make this work. I think that if we limit the amount of houses to maybe 475 houses, which, what that is, is like, that's a 10,000-square-foot lot, which is what the CR code is, you limit the houses, the way that the subdivision is divided, it's almost as if there's two subdivisions anyway. So if we go on a, with a development plan where we have benchmarks and permits pulled slowly, I think we can get this done, preserve these people's legacies, and have a subdivision that we can be proud of. We can ask for the charging stations, trying to make everything, bringing it to the 21st century, but have the amenities of a community. So I really would, instead of denying this outright, would like to craft something so that, number one, we can honor this woman's and that family's legacy, but number two, start the process of setting standards in this community, which is what we'd be doing by placing these standards on it, and bringing this as something that this community could cherish and relish. So that's where I am today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Williams, any comments from you?
Well, I really appreciate your thought, and I see your vision. I just don't see it for this property, because for one, the roads are not really compatible with that large of a development, but also, I feel like the zoning that's already there, the agricultural residential, is really more appropriate for that piece of land. So...
All right. It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any additional comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, could I get Commissioner Washington's vote?
No.
It said no?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let the record reflect, Commissioner Washington is voting no. All right, thank you. Next item, please.
Item 102 is future land case 2022-05, in ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended. So as to re-designate property located as Zero Highway 138 Southeast, Highway 138 Southeast, and 2010 Southeast Weatherstone Circle, from the commercial future land use category to the mixed-use employment center future land use category, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a second reading this morning.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure? I move to deny.
I'm sorry.
Based on the criteria listed in Rockdale County Code, Section 238-4, I hereby move to deny this ordinance as presented.
I second.
It's been properly motioned and seconded from Commissioner Washington. Are there any comments or questions on this particular item?
Well, that, it's interesting, because I could see townhomes in this, owner-occupied townhomes in that particular area. As I drove out there the other day, commercial stuff will go up, and I just, you know, that may be your preference, but I would rather see townhomes in that area.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Are you opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you.
And let the record reflect that Commissioner Williams is voting in opposition of it. Next item, please.
All right, thank you. This item goes right along with item 102. So this is item 103, rezoning case 2022-11, in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning Zero Highway 138 Southeast from C1 to RM to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to deny, based upon the criteria listed in Rockdale County, Section 238-4.
I second that motion. It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let me go back, I'm sorry. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Williams, any questions or comments?
No.
Commissioner Washington?
No.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? All in favor, say aye.
I'm sorry, aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Whether any opposed?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Williams is in opposition of that item. Next item, please.
Item 104 is rezoning case 2023-02, in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning 2304, 2322, and 2332 Old Covington Highway from R1 Single Family Residential to M1 Limited Industrial to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a second reading.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to deny, based upon the criteria listed in Rockdale County Code, Section 238-4.
I second the motion. It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have opposed, thank you.
And one opposition by Commissioner Williams on that particular item on Covington Highway.
All right.
All right, so we are now down to public comment.
That is correct. I have not received any red cards this morning. All right, so it looks like we have one coming up. Okay, I will go ahead and read the disclaimer, Mr. Chairman.
Executive Director Barkley, thank you so much.
Thank you. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other, or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an inappropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Thank you so much. We'll call up Mr. George Kellecheck. Come on up, Mr. Kellecheck. Good morning.
Commissioners, citizens of Rockdale County. As George Washington Carver stated, where there is no vision, there is no hope. I'm the chairman of the Rockdale Soil Water Conservation District, real estate developer and builder in both Georgia and Florida, presenting today an alternative to this, which is the clear-cutting of our land. We provided a concept to the administration over 18 months ago. This village habitat design conservation community was also conveyed to the city council and the Conyers Rockdale Economic Development Council, which was well-received over the last two weeks. This information is provided by villagehabitat.com. Owner is Greg Ramsey. He does these developments around the world, and even in DeKalb County, they work very well. These answer questions to institutional housing, community gardens, fishing, and protecting our environment. I asked this administration to host a developer-builder symposium to share this conservation community concept, because if we don't, we will continue to have the destruction of our environment throughout Rockdale County. Right now, there's a 560-acre tract and a 217-acre tract owned by the Rockdale Soil Water Conservation... acre tract owned by the Rockdale Soil Water Conservation, or Rockdale Water Soil Authority, which we could look at utilizing for this type of development. Ladies and gentlemen, this is what you could have. Let us reimagine the land use map in Rockdale County, along with the city of Conyers, and provide the type of institutional housing, uh, for our taxpayer dollars because we can have institutional housing at a very affordable cost, along with high-end housing, and actually uh, have a strategy that will work for everybody to attract people to Rockdale County. Thank you very much for your comments. If you'd like me to share this later on with you, I'll ask Greg Ramsey to come and have a in-person meeting with the, your administration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kellecek, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up is Mr. Jesus Oliveras. Good morning, Mr. Jesus.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity that you provide for us.
Yes.
Um, I'm just going to show you a map. You probably can't see it, but this is the map of, of our county. Every single red dot that you see there is a development either already done, houses already there, nobody's occupying them, and that includes also those that are being provided, and they do not include the ones that you were talking about right now and the ones that you have in the future, okay? So you can see that all you see there is green dots. I mean, it's gonna be red dots completely. And I'd like to read just a comment. I had two comments, but I'm gonna delete one, okay? For time's sake, uh, that one of the citizens wrote, okay? Why is Rockdale County so behind? Why don't we have restaurants like other counties? People are tired of having to drive to the city for a nice restaurant. Why are there places for the kids like Dave and Buster's and other places? Why don't we have adequate shopping centers and malls? What isn't Rockdale like other counties? And what do we have to get nice restaurants and activities out of this way? I'm not gonna bore you with statistics or anything. You already heard all of that completely. But I'm gonna summarize what we, the citizens of the county, have been talking to you, the elected officials. We don't need any carpet bags to come here and tell us to change our laws. We don't need any carpet bags to tell us how to live and our properties' conditions completely at all, okay? You guys are our eyes and ears in the county. You guys are our elected officials completely, okay? And I'm just gonna say it just like it comes from my heart, okay? Completely, the chairs that you sit on are not yours. They belong to us, the people, all right? And we are not as dumb as the people in Pennsylvania, all right? And if you don't listen to the people of Rockdale County, take a lesson from what happened in Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jesus, and we appreciate all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. I think that completes all of our public comment cards. We'll move now into board comment, and I'll start with Commissioner Washington.
So I do want to address some of that, um, that, um, public comment. Um, so I've sat here for six years and I've just recently gotten involved with economic development over the last two, three years. Um, and I've delved into the economic development, going to classes, going to, um, the seminars, trying to be very proactive in getting what we want here. The number one thing that they look at when they're bringing retail anywhere are two things, income and, and density or, or bodies. So, for example, a Whole Foods, everybody wants Whole Foods, and I tell everybody that you have to be, um, I, I'd say, when I go to Whole Foods, some of the things that I buy in Whole Foods, my great-grandmother would say it was pure foolishness, like coming out with thirty dollars worth of olives, that's just, you have to have a group of people that are willing to go and pay thirty dollars for olives or twenty dollars for, um, uh, I've spent twenty dollars on honey at Whole Foods. My great-grandmother would say that was, that's foolishness. You gotta have a group of people that are willing to do that. So they're looking at, they, they take, they look at the county, the density and the income. So when we aren't doing the things like bringing in developments, that the price points that are, are at a certain way with the number of people, then the people that are coming in, they're, they're seeing that our, I think the median household income right now for Rockdale County is like sixty-two, sixty-two thousand dollars a year, where to have a Whole Foods, you have to have seventy-five thousand dollar a year median income and two hundred and fifty thousand people within a certain radius. So those are the things that they look at. But other establishments, those are the ones that are looking at that if, the bo, the dollar stores are, they're saying that this community, when they come here, they've done their research and they're saying this is our target market. So the things that we have to do is figure out how to get out of their target market so that they won't come here and the other people feel comfortable coming to Rockdale County because they know when they put a store here or a restaurant here, that we're gonna be able to consistently, not just on birthdays, but consistently go out and spend the money for the nice restaurants. So those are the type of things, those are the type of developments that we have to gear ourselves when we do our comprehensive plan, which you just, I don't know if you know, you just volunteered for our comp plan, um, um, committee since, with, with your, your comments. But those are the things that we have to do now, is figure out how do we preserve what we have and the community that we have, but go to the place where we are attracting the demographic that we need to go to that next level. So that's, that's kind of the answer to your question.
I understand that. I'm not talking so much, this was just a comment from somebody else, bringing stuff in here, but why do you make more developments than when you already have enough housing already, completely, to fill all those people there? And then I, I, I do agree with what you said. Take that piece of money, develop it for the community, not for somebody else. You don't need more houses, okay? That's, that's a big area there for these young people that are coming up to be, to be utilized. I agree with that. We don't need no more houses. We just need something else for the county people, okay? Uh, the developer at one time mentioned about millennials and other people there, there be people in this county that were here before, and I'm not criticizing, before you guys came, okay? And they want a status quo to a certain degree. Yes, they want increases as well, and it does take time, it does take a lot of investment. But let's look at the right things. And one of the right things that this has had, okay? Let's fix our traffic problem. Act twenty right there is the biggest problem unless, when you bring more people in, they gonna leave. I've been through this before in other counties. I moved from Plain County here because I like to see trees, okay? I like to see beards, that development that you're talking about, honey, that's where the beards all are completely there. I just saw one this morning when I came over here. So let's look at maintaining our, our county, but given the people are good boys and doing what's right, don't keep throwing up more houses, okay? And I thank you for your comments about the restaurants. I understand that. This is that man. Listen to what I'm saying, because I said it last time, you won't buy it if you don't buy that, and I know you're not living if you don't buy that. And you're not gonna live in that area. We do, I do, okay? And the traffic and everything else, I'm not going into, you already heard it completely. And, and the chairman said that he's, uh, he probably need a secretary to be on the phone call and everything that, that he got.
Can I, one more thing about the traffic. So we did our traffic, um, we do a, 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 what is it, a traffic, um, not the study, but...
Impact, impact study, right?
Not the impact. When we have everybody come down here, our traffic town hall, um, where we have...
Oh, the Transportation Summit.
Yeah, we have a transportation summit every year since we've taken office. And one of the things that I asked this year, I, you, is how do we get in front of it? We, we see it coming, we know it's coming, we, we see all the development, how do we get in front of it so that we can get out of it, out of the traffic? The gentleman from the Georgia Department of Transportation told us that they don't start fixing traffic until it's a real bad problem, which isn't a good place to be. I know, I looked just like that. That was the look on my face when he said that. But that was the answer to his question, to my question, is that they don't start fixing the problems until they're bad problems, which isn't good enough to me. So, you know, that's, that's something that we're also looking at in a transportation study. What are the next steps in, um, moving our transportation forward? Is it gonna take a T-Splosh or something like that so we can put money that we receive and, and allocate it differently? So I just...
I'm just open to transportation people, but there is a problem.
Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry.
No apology needed, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Jesus. Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams?
Oh, wait on me, as my, um, one more thing, I have...
Okay.
One more thing, um...
We're still on Commissioner Washington, her comments, go right ahead, Commissioner.
I did have a, um, Women's History, and I, and I did it differently this time, let's see if I can do it. Uh, let's see. March eighth, eighteen thirty-nine, American inventor Josephine Cochran was born in Ashtubala County, Ohio. She wasn't the inventor of the first commercially successful automated dishwasher, which she constructed together with mechanic George Butters. After receiving a patent on December twenty-eighth, eighteen eighty-six, she showed her invention at the eighteen ninety-three World's Colombian Exposition in Chicago and won the highest prize for best mechanical construction, durability, and adaptation to its line of work. So she's my she-rol, the one, the inventor of the dishwasher.
All right, all right. Give us, give us her name again, please.
It is, okay, you are from Wilson Academy, this is gonna be on your test, so take notes. It is Josephine Garris Cochran.
All right, it was Cochran, all right.
Now I'm done.
All right.
I should tell you right now, I love Josephine. I'm so glad she did that. Um, so, a couple of different things, uh, that have happened this past week and that are coming up. Um, I was able to attend the, um, ACCG Legislative Breakfast down at the Capitol last week. Um, that is always, that being there, the breakfast, of course, was over at the Freight Depot across the street from the Capitol, but we heard speakers, um, we heard the Secretary of State speak. He talked about elections, he talked about, uh, the integrity of Georgia's elections. We, um, we heard from the, uh, Transportation Department. Um, we heard about some different bills that are, um, being voted on that have crossed over from one house to the other. Um, one of the major ones that is, uh, an interesting one is, uh, weight limits for trucks because currently the weight limit is eighty thousand pounds. Um, but this bill would allow eighty-eight thousand pounds on our roads. The Transportation Department, there, there's two, two issues with that. One, the Transportation Department said that will in, increase the, um, need for road repairs by thirty percent. But it's also, um, that there's a federal limit on the interstates of eighty thousand, which means those heavier trucks cannot go on the interstates. So where will they go? They'll go on our state, our state highways and local roads. Um, and so that's a problem too, because that directly impacts what we're paying for road repair, plus, plus the, um, the concerns about safety with those big trucks on our local roads. Um, and then after the, after the breakfast, then I had an opportunity to walk across to the Capitol and speak with several of our, uh, Rockdale delegation. Um, you know, I would suggest to anybody that they really ought to just go down and listen and hear what's going on. Um, there were lots of students there the day I was there. Um, they were, I think it must have been the Senate that was honoring scouting because there were little scouts all the way to big scouts, adult scouts. Um, but, and, but it's just, you, you get the real picture of how state government works and how it affects what's happening right here in Rockdale County. Uh, coming up, this, this week, tomorrow, we have a stepping up initiative steering committee meeting, and I would invite anybody who would like to attend to, um, to do so, um, just to see what's going on with our criminal justice and our mental health, uh, community. It is a Zoom meeting, so if you're interested, just email me and I can email you the Zoom, uh, link. The, um, we're going to get, this meeting is gonna be limited to an hour, but we will get updates on everything that's going on in this community. We will get updates on our restorative justice complex, um, where we are in the process of building that out, um, in relationship also to a site visit that was made, uh, in November, December, or January, I don't even remember, to, um, Millidgeville, um, and Macon. Um, there'll be, uh, an update on our opening doors to recovery project. Um, that is, uh, a pro, a program that, for people coming out of incarceration who have addictions or mental health issues, they, they sign up to participate in this particular program, and there are three people who are hands-on with them. So it's a very intensive case management program, and, um, so far it's working as it ought to work. And, um, that will be, we'll hear an update on that, we'll hear an update on what's happening with our recovery center, Grit and Grace, and how, um, the supports that they are providing for our Accountability Court participants and others in, in the, um, in the community. Also, then, my third thing is Women's History Month. And, um, do I, okay, so I think, from what I can see, the theme for this year is valiant women of the vote, refusing to be silenced, and...
Commissioner, what was that theme again? Give it in case the kid, young people are taking note of that.
Valiant women of the vote, refusing to be silenced. And I was just going to, um, address the youth. And I was just going to, um, address the youth on how important it is when you are 17 and a half, you can register to vote. And then on, beginning on your 18th birthday, you're already registered and you can vote in the next election. It's important to have that your vote and your voice, this is talking about women and refusing to be silenced, but, but I want to expand that to, to our young people. That this is really important, because many times, the vote is dominated by, um, do I want to say old people? But, but, you know, adults with families and senior citizens and, and, and all of that. And we have a large population of youth. So, um, are any of you registered to vote already? Oh, yay. Oh, yay. Okay, good. So your peers are doing it, and I would encourage you to do it also. Those are my comments.
All right, Commissioner Washington, any additional comments?
No, I am-
Okay, all right. I'm gonna start off my, um, Women in History Month with, uh, our very own, uh, Fire Chief, Chief McDaniel. Come on up, Chief McDaniel, I want you to talk about, yeah, give her a round of applause. Absolutely. As the chief is ma, making her way to the podium and the microphone, let me just tell you, Chief McDaniel serves as our very first African-American female firefighter for the Rockdale County Fire and Rescue. But since Chief McDaniel has taken the leadership role as the executive fire chief of Rockdale County, she's made a lot of changes in terms of diversity. You hear a lot of conversation about DEI, Diversity Equity and Inclusion and Belonging. Uh, the chief has made a lot of strides in terms of recruiting more women. Uh, Chief, tell us about the makeup and the demographic of the Rockdale County Fire and Rescue.
First of all, thank you very much for the honor, um, your lecture. I honored all of the women of Rockdale County Fire Rescue. So for you to recognize me, ultimately us this year, I really truly appreciate it. So Rockdale County Fire Rescue, out of, uh, 180 personnel, 103 of those are in our field operations. Of those, uh, four women are firefighters. We have one serving as a captain, one that's a driver, uh, which is at the sergeant position. In addition to myself, I have, uh, we are the second fire department, uh, nationwide that I know of as of right now that has all women executive staff running a fire department. Uh, the city of DeCade, our, our Fire Chief, Tony Washington is one. So in addition to the four firefighters, I have myself, as well as my two deputy fire chiefs, which are women as well. Uh, we have our fire prevention officers, which are women, our fire education officers, which are women. Uh, so we have a heavy presence of women in the fire rescue organization. Um, and it's growing. Um, you hear me talk about numbers. Nationwide firefighters, over 300, 400,000 firefighters, only 1 or 2% are women. Uh, so we're looking for that number to grow, so, young ladies, young ladies. Stand up, young ladies, let me see what, Wilson Academy. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, future firefighters for Rockdale County Fire Rescue. So, uh, but once again, we're growing, we're always looking for, uh, women, and we welcome our young men as well to join our organization. Uh, so, yeah, there we are.
Very good, Chief. And before you take your seat, let me just say this. I really do appreciate you, um, acknowledging the number of, of, of women within the fire department and acknowledging the presence of our young women as a part of Wilson Academy. But I also want to make sure that you have an opportunity to communicate with Mr. Wilson, who's here on behalf of the school, so that the young people can visit our fire department and our fire headquarters and really learn there's a whole lot more to fire and rescue than riding or driving a fire truck. And I think the opportunity to meet you and the other women and all of the men and women who make up Rockdale County Fire Rescue would certainly enlighten them. Even whether they have, even if they don't have an interest in firefighting at all, I think the exposure opportunity would really, uh, be a big service to the county as well as to the young people. Let's give Chief McDaniel another round of applause. Also want to call up our Parks and Rec Director, Director Redman. He has some exciting news about some of the new activity and equipment we have out at Parker Road.
Good morning, Chairman.
Morning.
Good morning, Madam Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for calling me up, Chairman. Um, wanna just make a couple of, uh, highlights for Parks and Recreation. Uh, as you said previously, we do have a, uh, fitness court at Parker Road, 1400 Parker Road. This court is in conjunction with the National Fitness Campaign, which is a nationwide movement, um, that has, uh, national fitness centers, uh, all over the nation. So essentially what it is, is an outdoor, um, gymnasium for exercise. Um, I did a board presentation, um, for this campaign maybe about three months ago, and I explained that, um, it is, you can, uh, use your smartphone to scan a QR code and go in and do certain workouts with it. So, um, it's right there at Parker Road, it's big, it's blue, you can't miss it. It's in the middle of the field, um, it's, it is in the middle of the walking trail as well, so it's a very, uh, convenient space for it.
Well, I want to say hats off to Director Redman and his staff. Um, we walk out at Parker Road and several of the walkers, uh, both morning and late evening walkers are really delighted to be able to participate in this new equipment that's out there. It's an added value when you talk about health and wellness throughout Rockdale County. So hats off to Parks and Recreation, and I want to commend both of my colleagues for supporting, um, this, uh, forward movement when we talk about parks, recreation, and new amenities in our county. Let's give Director Redman a round of applause. Parks, Parks and Recreation.
Can I ask Director Redman about our activity?
Go right ahead.
Director Redman, are we doing any Easter egg hunts?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Any Easter egg hunt? I had a group of children who wanted to know if we were-
The announcement for your upcoming Easter egg hunt?
Yes, we do have an Easter egg hunt coming up. That flyer will be done, uh, really soon. We, we have not confirmed everything yet, all the pieces, so I don't want to announce it just yet. So at the next board meeting, you will see a flyer for it. But yes, we definitely will have an Easter egg hunt, and it will be at Costa Mill, that much I can tell you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
All right. And, uh, I know you're eagerly waiting for that. One more highlight, Chairman and Commissioners, just wanted to, uh, bring to your attention that this year, for the first time, Rockdale County Parks and Recreation was the district host for the District, uh, Georgia Recreation Parks Association State Basketball Tournament. So we are in District Six, so we were able to host a district tournament. And, uh, oftentimes, I come before you all and say, "I need this, and I need that, and we need this building, and we need that building." And to be honest with you, all three of our gymnasiums have been, um, we have a new gymnasium at Johnson Park. We renovated the old gymnasium, then we also renovated JP Carr Gymnasium. That allows for us to host these tournaments, that brings people to come in and eat at the restaurants. If we had a two-day tournament, they would have to stay at a hotel. However, this was our first time hosting a tournament. We were able to put in, for the first time, four teams into the district tournament.
Wow.
We put a 10-and-under, a 12-and-under, a 14-and-under, and a 17-and-under. The 10-and-under were the runner-up, and they played in Walton County. The 12-and-under, they lost in the first round in Macon-Bibb County. So again, this gives the kids the opportunity to travel to different areas and different regions to play and compete. Uh, the 14U were the runner-up in Rockdale County, and our 17U were the champions of District Six in Rockdale County. So, just wanted to highlight their spirits and their accomplishments.
Thank you, and thank you, Director Redman, for you and your staff, the great job you all are doing out there in, um, Parks and Rec all throughout Rockdale County. I tell you, we've got some very strong programming in our Parks and Rec Department, a lot of opportunities for young people as we're approaching spring and summer. I know today may not seem all that springy just yet with, uh, 30-degree weather at the top of the morning, but a lot of forward thinking is going into Parks and Recreation. Plenty of options and opportunities for our young people and for all of our, uh, community as a whole. I heard the young lady when she said, "Season," when you said old, she said seasons. So I'm, I'm with her, "season," absolutely. I do want to call up Director Dan Morgan, he is our Emergency Management Agency Director. Uh, Director Morgan, uh, the alert went off about 4 o'clock the other day, and I started getting calls right after that. Um, folks start texting me at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning. Wanted to know, first of all, had I lost my mind? And I had to tell them, no, I had all, have all my faculties, had not lost my mind. But I thought it, I'd call you up to kind of, uh, validate that, if you would.
Yes, and I want to dispel any rumors, Rockdale County is not ca, is not starting a wake-up service. So, um, this was a warning, and our Swift Reach program, it was a mistake. It will not happen again. We corrected it. There was a flaw in the system, that it was sending out every warning, and it should only send out tornado and very severe thunderstorm warnings. The frost warning, when the National Weather Service put the warning at the end, kicked it out. We didn't realize, we haven't had a, we haven't had a freeze warning in a long time. Didn't realize that was buried in the system. We have corrected it, we apologize for that. And, um, I promise you, Chairman, next phone call you get at 4:30, it'll probably be from me personally. It won't be from an automated system. So that's, it was a mistake, and we apologize for that.
No, we thank you for the apology, but we, let me just tell you, we, we appreciate the apology. It wasn't inconvenienced, it did disturb some people, it woke a lot of folks up. It scared the stew out of folks, old school to say stew. It scared the stew out of some folks. But we do understand that technology oftentimes leaves us hanging. As much as we move into a more technology-savvy world, uh, oftentimes, there are glitches with technology, and, uh, it throws everything out of whack, and it really is an inconvenience. So we feel better knowing what had actually happened. I knew, um, the backdrop to all of this, but I thought it would be important for you to come up and explain it as the Director of Emergency Management. But I, I want to say to our residents, we have your best interests at heart when it comes to public safety. And we want to make sure that we have all of the tools and resources necessary to alert you and to give you the proper warning. We ask that you don't jump to conclusions. Bear with us, because sometimes, technology, just like the TV did back in the sixties and the seventies, sometimes it would act up and it would say on the screen, "Please stand by, we're having technical difficulties." We can, technology moves so fast, and as fast as it moves, oftentimes, it messes up at the same time. So we ask that you bear with us. I really appreciate Director Morgan and he and his team and all of the fine work they do to make sure that Rockdale County is a safe community. He is also in charge of our emergency 911. Uh, but he has assured us that, uh, chances are, it's less likely, I'm gonna put it that way, because sometimes, uh, technology will make a fool out of you. Uh, but it's less likely that this is happening again. But please know that we're not pressing the budding button, and this is something that was a bleep and a blunder. But thank you so much. Let's give them a, a round of applause for the work they're doing. As I prepare to wrap up, I want to give a couple of comments on several things that have taken place this morning. First of all, I want to say thank you to both of my colleagues, because we are tasked often with some very burdensome responsibilities to make, make big decisions in Rockdale County. Uh, I also want to commend the residents of Rockdale County in all parts and all area, whether you're in the Honey Creek area, whether you're a resident out at Weatherstone Community and some of those other areas, if you have a school or you have a business along the, uh, highway, Covenant Highway corridor, let me say this to you. We appreciate you, and we appreciate you coming out and, and sharing your thoughts concerning the future direction of Rockdale County. I, I echo the fact that, yes, we are growing, we have grown. This is not the same community that it was in 1975. I agree that there has to be balance, but also there has to be education and understanding what the Commissioner was trying to articulate that in order for those businesses that a lot of us desire to see in our community, there has to be a feasibility study. A part of that feasibility study includes, includes taking a hard look at the median household income. And right now, we're somewhere between 61 and $62,000 per average median household income. We need to get that up just a little bit. You get it up by bringing in those people who are earning the level of income, which we call rooftops, that will also support and sustain those businesses when and if they decide to come in Rockdale County and set up shop. They are not going to come if everything doesn't check off properly with the criteria required during the feasibility study. There's a lot to be explained to this. This is one of the reasons why we're hosting the info sessions. This is another reason why we have the Infrastructure Planning Task Force that included, um, the Atlanta Regional Commission. Our goal is to educate you and to inform you about how a city, a county, a community actually works. So I, I think it's important that we preserve the heritage and those sacred places inside of our community. We don't have total control over that. I do have to make mention that a lot of the farms are being sold or up for sale. What comes in, how it looks, we do have some influence in those areas. My encouragement to you is to be a part of what Executive Director Redman is just looking for now. People to participate in our comprehensive plan as we continue to take a look at the future growth and the future opportunities here in Rockdale County. Continue to come out, continue to be an active player and an active part of what's going on in your community. We want to hear from you. But we also want to make sure that you are educated and that you are properly informed in terms of how to shape and mold a community. I believe that with some of the items that we had here this morning, that we were tasked with voting for, some of those items would really have brought culture shock to our community when you talk about traffic and, uh, some of those other things. I believe in the growth, and I think the growth should be measured as we go based upon all of our infrastructure and the feedback from our citizens. The citizens spoke very, very loud and clear during the planning commission meetings. They came out during the hearings and vo, uh, spoke very, very clearly. I also want to make sure I take this opportunity to commend those developers, because I have to give credit where credit is due. They made every available attempt to try and educate and to communicate with pockets of those communities, both Weatherstone as well as the folks out in the Honey Creek area. They may not have, uh, touched every single person, but they came out and made a, uh, an opportunity to do so, to communicate. I think they are going back to the drawing board, and they're gonna revisit and rethink about their vision as it relates to Rockdale County. So I want to make sure that you understand that we don't take this task lightly. Um, it's important, because we are residents here as well, it's important that we make sure that the future of Rockdale is able to embrace all of those people who call this wonderful county home. I'm proud to say that we're amongst the, one of the safest counties in the entire Atlanta region and, if not, the entire state. So, um, we have a lot to be proud of, there's a lot of growth in the right areas of our community, but I think it's, it's, there's an opportunity still wide open and on the table for the citizens to continue to communicate with the leadership of this county. Uh, Executive Director Redmond, I want you to just take a moment and talk about, uh, the comprehensive planning and, and the fact that we're actually looking for folks to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we are. So we have been sending out email blasts, uh, social media blasts, and we have links on our website. Um, we are putting out the notice, just like the councilwoman said this morning. Uh, we have a slightly different timeline than the City of Conyers, but Rockdale County is going through our comprehensive land use plan update as well, and we are looking for members to serve on the Steering Committee. There is an application that is out, and we have set a deadline for this Friday, March 17th, to have that application turned in to the Board of Commissioners' office. And that way, the board will be able to make the selection about who can serve on the Steering Committee, and we can get our process started too, with the public hearings and, um, the inevitable, uh, updating of the land use plan. So that will be this Friday, March 17th. So if anyone's interested, um, you can catch me after the meeting as well. Some of you have already turned in the volunteer forms, uh, we would very much appreciate, um, not only filling out the application, uh, if you're interested in serving, but the survey that's attached. It's, it's a, a similar survey that the City of Conyers talked about this morning. Rockdale County is going through the same process. I would encourage you to fill out both of those surveys, because whatever happens in the city, happens in the county and vice versa. We're a small geographical area, and planning and development is something that is very much, uh, felt by both entities. So that would be very helpful.
Well, thank you, Executive Director. Is there a number, uh, perhaps for the folks who are watching or listening to the broadcast that could call and, and pick up a little additional information?
Um, absolutely. So we are encouraging that if you're interested in volunteering, that you reach out to Patty Pearson in the Board of Commissioners' office. She is the administrative manager, and can be reached at 770-278-7001. That is our, uh, number to get the Board of Commissioners' office. And also, if you need additional information just about the process in general, we can provide it to you. provide it to you. Which leads me into something else I'd like to talk about for just a second. Speaking of getting additional information, I would love to encourage everyone to check out our new website. We have been working very, very hard getting this website updated with all of the pertinent information, getting us out of nineteen seventy-five. There is a lot of information on there that stays up to date, not just about the Board of Commissioners, but all of our departments, our elected officials. We have a calendar on the front page of the website, which is a big deal, you all know. Also, all of the backup information, I would really encourage you to explore that website and to use it, because, and if you see something on there we can improve, let us know. That is how we're trying to make sure our citizenry has all the up-to-date information on Rockdale County. I think that, I think you'll really like it if you get a chance to look at it. And just for everyone, the website address, www.rockdalecountyga.gov. Please check it out.
That was a bonus announcement. You just, that was what I call a bonus announcement.
Well, Chairman, I am so excited about the website, because for the most part, when citizens need information, they reach out to me, which is fine, but I'm just one human. So it's better if they have somewhere to go, and, because I know that you want up-to-date information, you might be interested in a SPLUS meeting, a task force meeting, the planning commission, the Board of Commissioners, and we have a lot happening here.
Well, you're absolutely right, and the website is, we just launched a brand-new, user-friendly website, I must say. It is very, they did a fantastic job putting this website together, putting a lot of thought into it. If you've not visited our website, please go out there and take a look at it. Oftentimes, people call into the office, or they're wondering. They're either talking and discussing on social media or a Nextdoor app and wanting to know where to go to find this, that, and the other. The county is a business. We have a website. You can go to the website and navigate yourself through, and I tell you, you're going to find it to be quite a friendly navigation as you move forward. I do want to make just a couple of more announcements, and we're going to wrap it up. I want to ask that our Executive Director, Tony Holmes, from Talent Management, make her way to the podium. Just like every industry throughout the region, we are challenged with attracting new talent, retaining folks, and we've got a few job openings, and want to make sure that people can go to the website and navigate themselves through. And I don't know where it says, "jobs" or "careers," what does it say?
It actually says "employment," Mr. Chairman. It's on the homepage of the new website. We have forty-six jobs posted right now on that website. I definitely encourage everyone to take a look at it. We are going to do our annual employment summit, so that's coming up in July as well. We hosted that at Johnson Park last year, had great success with that. So we're inviting everybody, take a look at the website. We also have an internship program that's going to be starting up this summer, and just encourage you to reach out to my office if you have any questions. Claudette Ransifer is our recruitment and retention manager, and she would be very excited to speak with you. So I'm going to go ahead and share the number for our office directly. It's seven-seven-oh-two-seven-eight-seven-five-seven-five. Again, that's seven-seven-oh-two-seven-eight-seven-five-seven-five. So if you're looking for a wonderful opportunity, a dynamic place to work, we ask that you join us. And again, take a look at the website. It's on the very front page, it says "employment," so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Executive Director Holmes, thank you so much, and we certainly do appreciate all of the efforts out of your recruitment office and talent management to bring the best employees to Rockdale County. I want to take this opportunity at this point to extend an invitation to Mr. Wilson and all of our young people from Wilson Academy to our upcoming State of the County address. It's going to take place on Thursday, March the thirtieth, at six p.m., right here in this very own auditorium. I think it will be a wonderful exposure opportunity and experience for our young people to come out and witness what we actually do for the State of the County address here in Rockdale County. Again, that's on Thursday, March thirtieth, right here. It's open to the public at six p.m., so we ask that you make a note of that, and if you all are available, we'd love to have you as our special guest, and so glad to have. Let's give Wilson Academy another round of applause this morning. Young people who are focused on their future and academic excellence, and we certainly do appreciate the leadership of Mr. Wilson. I want to move now to Chief Sanders. Chief Sanders, are there any pressing or pending announcements from your office that we need to make aware to our general public?
Good morning. Just wanted to mention that our Stormwater Department and Planning and Development Departments have moved.
That's right.
So the address for Stormwater is eleven-nineteen West Avenue, and Planning and Development is eleven-seventeen West Avenue. They're right next door to each other, over by where Elections is. Their phone numbers and emails have remained the same.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Planning and Development and our Stormwater Department have both moved to West Avenue. They've got much more space to operate, and we are making way for the future and future development right here with our own government complex and structure, so things are happening here in Rockdale County. Am I overlooking anything? All right, so now it's up to you. Executive Director Rutledge, is there any need for executive session this afternoon?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, happy Tuesday. Thank you for coming out. You live in the best county in the state. I've always said, there's only two county people, those that live in Rockdale and those that wish they live in Rockdale. This meeting is adjourned.